So it's 5:08 and I'm gonna call the school committee meeting to order.
It's 5:08, you call the finance committee meeting to order?
It's 5:08 and I will call the select board meeting to order. Should we start with the pledge of allegiance? Okay. And with that, I am going to pass the mic over to Nicole.
For the comment?
Oh, did we have any?
None.
Thanks, John. Thanks, Steve.
Nothing online?
Okay, great, so...
Public comment?
Oh, okay. Anybody online have a public comment? Okay, hearing none. I'll close public comment and pass it to Nicole.
So thanks, everyone, for your time tonight. So with us in the room, we have a consultant from MARS, which is Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools, Jay Barry. And then online, we have Dr. Steve Hemmon, also a consultant from MARS. So I think what, at least for me, kind of thinking about what we want to get out of tonight's meeting, is really that this is, first, we want to understand who you are and what you do. But I think that this is purely fact-finding. I don't think that any of us really have an idea if regionalization is a good fit for us or which direction we want to go in. I think we just want to understand from you what the steps are and the considerations are that we need to make in order to kind of get the ball rolling and see if it's something that makes sense for Belcher Town.
Sure. So should I?
Sure.
Okay, here. Okay. So just to back up a moment. My name is Jay Barry and I'm a former educator and school superintendent. I was a school superintendent for seventeen years. And when I retired, I was invited into the MARS consulting group. That was almost nine years ago now. So I've been associated with them for a while. My colleague, Steve, was online, was former executive director of...
Want me to say something?
Fine, go ahead.
Can I just ask one thing? Can the people at home hear or does Mr. Barry need to be on microphone?
He needs to be on a microphone. I could not pick him up.
That's what I thought. Okay.
The seat here? Yes, that's the backseat. Okay, that's all right.
Sorry to interrupt, but we want to make sure everybody can hear you. Okay, thank you.
Steve, you were saying?
Sorry, am I up?
Yes. Could you introduce yourself?
Yes, I'm Steve Hemmon. I'm with the MARS consulting group. I was, established the group back in 2012. And I was executive director previously to MARS, the organization MARS, Mass Association of Regional Schools. And I've been an educator all my life and I hold a doctorate in administration.
Okay, so this is your meeting.
Am I still, can you still hear me?
Yes, I hear you. So I was gonna ask you how you wanted to proceed. So I can, I can talk for a while about things or you can ask questions. Both of those options can be helpful. So what is it that you're, what's your point on that?
I think for me, I am interested to hear first and foremost the pros and cons, why other communities have done this and what obstacles we would face if we moved forward.
Okay. If I may, can I back up a little further and ask if everybody understands the difference between municipal school district and a regional school district?
I think that would be a great thing for anyone who's listening to hear. And also just why this group was formed to begin with.
Why your group was formed?
Yours.
My group?
Yeah.
Got it. Okay. So as, one of the documents I forwarded is out of the Mass Channel Law's Chapter 71, which is where most of the statutes are around regional schools. So I was a principal in a regional school district down the road to Antasqua for nine years. And I was a superintendent.
I'm not sure if you can hear me. We can't, I think we lost something somewhere along the line.
There's a message about speaker. Yes, Steve's working on it.
Echo canceling speakerphone?
So should I wait for a hold on?
Yes. Thank you.
You might have to grab that microphone to your desk.
Is that the logo?
Should I move closer to this?
The slogan is in green. It used to be green.
Mic is up, so?
Well, our mic.
There you go.
That used to be green.
Should I try yours now?
Also, is the camera on? There's a slash through it.
It wasn't.
Okay. Okay, it's all good.
Well, I think I'm gonna plow ahead if that's okay.
We got something back.
Can you hear us?
Can you hear us? Okay.
Hold up a sign. This is, can you hear us?
It's gonna be one of those meetings.
Yep.
Doctor Hemmon, can you hear us now?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you very much. We're gonna get going again. Okay.
Okay, Mr. Barry.
So there, the, what, the document there is the section of Chapter 71 that lists what regional school committees are authorized to do, okay? And I'm not gonna speak to every single one of those provisions. But it's important to understand that a regional school district is its own, the phrase they use in the statute is body politic, okay? So it's, it's its own government organization and entity, okay? It exists by itself. It can hire people, fire people, pay people, borrow money, enter into contracts, all of that, on its own, without the member towns, okay? So it has, it really is, it's important to know that. It has its own, it's its own organization. And the member towns are represented by their school, elected school committee representatives, okay? Now, one of the things that I would point out is that even though a regional school district is its own entity politically and legally, it exists out of an agreement between the member towns. And if you ever got to the point of doing a regional agreement, that's one of the first sentences in a regional agreement, that all the provisions that follow in this agreement are a result of how the member towns have agreed to come together, okay? So it's a partnership. It's its own entity, but it's also a partnership. And it's very important that regional school districts, even though they are independent to some degree, very much keep in mind their members and keep them posted, keep them informed, let them know what's going on. And when, sometimes when that communication isn't there so well, things don't go well, okay? So on one hand, yes, regional districts are more independent than municipal districts. But on the other hand, the relationships you need with your member towns is a really big priority, okay? So there are, the other, the other thing probably you already know about is that regional districts receive reimbursement for their transportation, okay? So there's a formula that's used. The legislature funds this account every year. The law says it should be fully funded. It never is. Isn't the phrase "subject to appropriation"? But it is, generally you're reimbursed. It really varies between about sixty and eighty percent. And that, I'm using that number because I'm very much shooting from the hip. It'll vary by sort of how robust the state budget is. But that's a benefit that municipal districts, of course, don't have, okay?
Is that...
Yeah, any, any questions, just jump in.
Okay, is, so is that reimbursement a percentage of the entire transportation cost inside of the regional? Like, let's say you only regionalize part of the district. So you've got, you've got both municipal and regional.
Yep.
Is the state reimbursing sixty, eighty percent of the entire transportation cost or just that region?
Just the region, yeah.
Can I confirm, like, we charge our oldest kids to take the bus? Can we still charter if we become regional?
That's a good question. I don't think I want to answer that without looking into it further. Because that's, that's a little unusual.
I believe the answer's no.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that. I'd have to look into it. But the same, the formula does still, you know, you have to go through a computation your business manager would do about miles, numbers of kids and ridership and so forth.
Can you just briefly talk about municipalities that need K-6 requirement for buses, but region was required K-12?
I can't do that off the top of my head. But in a general sense, your elementary-age kids are entitled to transportation. Steve?
It's very hard to hear you.
Yeah, you just have to speak up when you're talking.
Okay, yeah. So Steve, do you want to say something about elementary transportation versus secondary?
Would you repeat that so I can make sure I get it straight?
Wow. About transportation, student transportation, could you make a comment about elementary and secondary school transportation?
Yes. A transportation reimbursement, if you are over a mile and a half, you'll be reimbursed, the state usually, about eighty-five to ninety percent of those costs for over a mile and a half that you can do. Also, when you regionalize, then you would be providing transportation for K through 12 in your district. The law says that in elementary, that if the law is that you would then, anything over two miles, you have to transport. High school, you don't, actually, seven through twelve, you don't have to. But in a region, you will then agree to transport all children over a mile and a half from the school, you get reimbursement. So it's basically, it's a mile and a half to get reimbursement. You could set it higher, but it's the mile and a half that you would get reimbursement of approximately eighty-five to ninety percent of the money that you expend on that. Is that what you're looking for?
Okay, yes, okay. So in terms of advantages and disadvantages, it would have been great if I knew some of these questions ahead of time. In a general sense, the governance picture changed, as I just mentioned, right? So in a municipal district, the schools are a department of the town government. So there's, there's a lot of coordination there. They're, they're working all under the same umbrella. And a regional district is a little bit more independent. So the select board, the finance committee have sort of a little bit more direct impact on a municipal district. They still do with a regional district, but it works a little differently. So governance, you don't, in a municipal district, you can control your, the Belcher Town public schools. In a regional district, a regional committee does that, okay? With the help of the superintendent and so forth, so...
Sorry, there's a question.
Yeah, so Mass Channel Law, Chapter 71, school committees are in charge of the school district?
Pretty much.
And they hire the superintendent who does day-to-day operations. The select board is not in our chain of command. Desi comes in if there's a problem.
With a municipal?
Yes.
Yeah, that sounds right.
Okay, that's just not what you just said.
Yeah, okay, well, I'm sorry if I misspoke. So there's a little bit of a difference with governance because you're, let's say you had one other member town, like you're Belcher Town and Town A, okay? The governance is shared between the school committee reps from Town A and your school committee reps. And they do what you just mentioned. Hire the superintendent, oversee budgets, et cetera, okay? So there's a little bit of local control, which sometimes is mentioned as a change. And some people would see that as a disadvantage. Regional transportation, people see that as an advantage sometimes, okay? So there's a, yeah, so that's about as much as I want to say about that right now.
Can you back forward to the microphone, please, so we can hear?
It's about two inches from my mouth, okay?
No, make it, make it an inch, it might be better.
Yeah, that's where it is now. Unless this needs to get turned up. Is it this mic or that mic?
Well, this mic, except for the whole room. I don't, maybe you're talking too fast, I don't know. If you're playing into the mics, we should have everybody.
So the other thing to maybe get into a little bit is you're thinking, you're looking, you're thinking about this as something you may or may not want to do. Is that correct?
We're, we're just listening. We're exploring. We're doing due diligence. That's basically it.
Yeah, okay, so...
If I can speak for the group?
The way that, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna imagine, maybe not it's Belcher Town, but I'm imagining that there's a community that definitely wants to pursue regionalization. And I'll talk about how that would work. Is that okay? So number, usually there's some sort of exploratory work on the part of a working group or stakeholders to learn a little bit about regional districts and the regionalization process. And then primarily to find a partner. You gotta have somebody to dance with if you're gonna do this, okay? If the other community is interested, let's say it's, it's a two-town district, then what would happen is the, both towns would work through their moderator and their select board. Lot of communication is necessary here. And they would appoint a regional school planning committee, okay? And usually that includes a select board representative, includes a finance committee representative, and it includes a school committee representative, okay? We've worked in, in projects where, I can think of a town, of a project in Eastern Mass. There were three towns involved and the regional planning committees for each town were three people. And it was choreographed like that, okay? So after those groups are appointed by the moderator, they meet together. And in their first meeting, they vote to form a regional school district planning board, okay? And the statute, I don't know if I sent that one to you, but I can, and elect officers, follow open meeting law. And that is the group that's responsible for analyzing whether or not regionalization makes sense, okay? So in the example I'm thinking of, there were nine people. And then ex officio members like the superintendent and business manager, et cetera, would also sit in on meetings. And they're charged by statute to look into a variety of different things. And these studies take time, okay? Generally, more than a year, okay? So regional, a good regionalization study, I would say if you're, if you've got capable people and you don't have obstacles or reluctance or problems, two years to do it, okay? So you're looking at educational matters. Does it make sense? Is it gonna represent the potential for improved educational programming? How will transportation work? The geography of the two towns, are there gonna be longer bus rides, shorter bus rides? How would that play itself out? You've gotta look at facilities. Are any schools gonna be closed? Would there be consolidation? Do you need a new school? All of that sort of thing. If you're leasing schools from your member towns, how would that work? And then, of course, a financial analysis to determine if this regional district came to be, what would the budget look like? And then in turn, what would the assessments look like? And I can talk a little bit more about assessments, because you don't have those in a municipal district. So that you have a report or a study that, at the very least, goes into quite a bit of detail about those five general topics, okay? Regional planning boards usually ask for outside help. And that's usually funded through grants. That's the best way to do it. It's, it's not a great thing to have to use operating budget to, to, to pay for outside help. Sometimes we've done these projects. Sometimes the people use other people. So at the end of it all, a really critical part of it happens. And that is that that regional planning board and their members need to review everything they've learned. And they need to come to a decision. And the decision is, all of our, all of our study has generally told us that pursuing regionalization is a good idea and we're in favor of it, okay? So if that is their vote, then the next step is they stay intact. They continue to be planning boards. And they start to work on a regional school agreement.
Can I stop you for a sec?
Yeah.
Where do the grants come from for that outside help?
So there's a state grant called Regionalization and Efficiency. And sometimes it's funded and sometimes it's not. I know municipal and state finance is kind of constrained right now. So I don't think in FY '26 it was funded. But that's where, that's where some of the funding comes from. The Department of Revenue also sometimes has some grant programs, so it's worth looking there. But anyway, to come, so if the vote is yes, then you, you form a subcommittee of that group and you start to put a regional agreement together. If the vote is no, then you polish up the study, get it in shape for, for it to be in public document, and it's sent to the respective select boards. And that's the end. It closes, okay? Because they've determined that all of the facts point toward, no, status quo, it's better than doing this, okay? So in the event that a planning board pursues a regional agreement, that also is time-consuming. And is at least gonna take a year, maybe more, okay? Particularly, yeah, because it's a new region. So you really, you don't have anything to go on. You're not amending an old agreement. You're writing it about a new organization. So it is a fair amount of work to it. And then when that finally is completed, and there's a lot of reviews that happen with that document, okay? First of all, everybody on the planning board needs to be comfortable with it and all its provisions. Secondly, it needs to be reviewed legally by town councils in the member towns. And then it also has to be reviewed legally by the elementary and secondary education department, okay? They need to give it preliminary approval before it can go to voters, okay? So if all of those things happen, and there's a lot of back and forth to that, that can take months. Then you have a final draft or a final proposed agreement. And that goes to the respective town meetings. And the voters are the decision-makers, okay? They decide. And you have to have a positive majority vote in each of the town meetings. If you don't, then it's, it's over. If you do, it moves forward to the next level, which is that the commissioner has to sign on. At that point, you would have what's called a transition period. And that's when all kinds of work needs to be done to make the new district operation. What do I mean by that? You've got to, so the two towns, in this example, if it was Belcher Town or somebody else, you'd still run your schools and so would Town A. But during that time, you would have to pay people to get this new district ready. And it means developing a budget. It means hiring superintendent, central office staff. It means developing the collective bargaining agreement for your teachers, other professional employment agreements or non-professional employment agreements, transportation contracts. All of that stuff has got to be done and completed. And then there's a day, operational day, where the new district says, okay, we're here and the doors open and you've got a new district. So it's a lot of work.
Jay?
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, what's the estimated cost and timeframe of these things?
Okay.
And I'm not holding you to a figure. I'm just, I'm just curious.
Yeah, so the, sometimes it happens in phases, okay? So, but I'm trying to think of some of the numbers. It's, it's, I hate to put a number up there. It can be, I can think of an example that was somewhere in the range of seven or eighty thousand. Of a whole thing, not for the first time.
And the timeframe, ballpark?
In one project we did, we got to the point where the planning board made a decision. Their study was complete and that took two years. Okay, if their decision is to move forward, it's gonna take longer, okay? There is a regionalization effort in Franklin County right now. They've been working on it for five years. It's a complicated thing where they're trying to merge regional. And get a lot of regional, so it's, it's a little bit tricky in the sense that there are existing regions that are trying to come together. But it takes, it takes time. Three years would be really fast, okay? So if I want to back up for a moment, I mentioned assessments. Everybody understands that?
Can I just ask a quick question on that content? So have you seen examples where the planning committee made the recommendation, but the voters did not approve it?
No, we haven't. Good question. There aren't many of these, okay? So, so that's, you know, and I, part of my thoughts today was to really encourage you to be as thoughtful as possible. Because these things are costly and they take a lot of time and they're kind of complicated. So all of those are reasons why there aren't many of them, okay? The newest regional district is A or Shirley. And that was, I want to say, ten, eleven, twelve years ago, okay? So there's no, haven't been, there has been an expanded region. There's an example of a two-town region that became a three-town region. I was the superintendent in that situation. But there, there aren't a lot of examples of this. Did you have a question?
I was just thinking, are there any school districts that do the opposite, regional, and they want to go back to?
Yes, so every once in a while, we'll get a call. Things aren't going well. People want to disband.
Do you know why they weren't going well?
Well, that also, in a positive sense, that also doesn't happen that often.
Right, right.
Yeah. And, and it's, it's, it's almost hopelessly complicated, especially if the district has been in place for a long time. Because you've got, you've got all kinds of capital resources and assets. You've got liabilities. How do those things get separated? What if two towns built a high school together? Now they're gonna break up. How does that work? You've got post-employment benefit costs. You've got county retirement. You've got all these things that are very difficult to parse out. So in those instances, it's much better to say, okay, is this because one town feels like they're paying more of the cost than they should be? Is it because they don't like the superintendent? Is it because, what is it, let's get at the problem and solve that, yeah?
So you mentioned buildings and like school buildings. So example, our town owns our buildings. We don't have a lease agreement or whatever. So regionalization, the region would own the school building. You have to lease them from one town to the other town.
Yeah, so...
You'd have to have like a lease agreement, is that what, or they would have to build their own building?
You, you, the planning board would have to come to a decision about, do you want to get into transferring ownership of those assets? Or do you want to just lease them? Okay, so you could do either. And at K-12, it's, it's fairly common that elementary schools are owned by the towns and so those involve leases. Long-standing regional districts, they'd usually come together to be... Long-standing regional districts, they'd usually come together to build middle school and high schools. Yes.
I have questions regarding programs, programming and student impact. How does regionalization usually affect academic and extracurricular offerings? And are there strategies for ensuring that smaller towns don't lose programs or identity in a regional school?
Okay, so in the regional studies that I'm familiar with, one of the in terms of educational programming, one of the messages is often based on the fact that Western Massachusetts, demographically, is losing population and losing kids. So schools are becoming smaller, okay? So sometimes people view regionalization as an effort to bring more student capacity together, which would allow them to offer better programs. In a tiny little high school, it's hard to offer AP physics, okay? Or French five, or a host of other programs. But if you put this small group or that small group, maybe the chances are better that your program of studies can be more extensive. And and that's often a part of what's going on right now. I actually agree with that. I think the scale of things can get so challenging that people are reducing programs. And because costs don't go down. If you lose, you probably know this, if you lose, if your student enrollment starts to decrease, it doesn't mean that your costs are decreasing, okay? If you have twenty-eight kids in a US history class, and all of a sudden you've got twelve, you still have a teacher, you still have a classroom. So those costs don't necessarily, they're not tied, they're not proportional, they're not related to one another.
But finance aside, do you have data that supports that regionalization improves student outcomes?
I'm not familiar with that, and I wanted to sort of continue to that point if I can, okay? But first, your other question was, how do you protect, or how does the smaller community still have a voice, right? And that's where you get into school committee rep and composition. How does the school committee form? How many seats are there? How many voices, how many people does the small town have? How many people does the large town have? How do you write the agreement so that the small town and their votes still count as much if you want them to, okay? There's a, there are some related requirements that you have to meet when you put a school committee together in a regional district. There's a one-man-one-vote requirement that comes from the Constitution. But you can have language that tries to protect a small town. And then in terms of your point about, is there data that says, if you do this, your scores will go up by this much, and kids will do better in school and so forth? No. And and when people get to the point where they're talking to voters about creating a region, I think, in my own opinion, I I think it's fair to talk about the possibilities of better programming or more expansive program. But you have to be very careful about promising that everything's gonna get better. That's, there's the potential for those things, but I'm not aware of a study that says this is gonna result in more effective teaching.
I I didn't find that either, but I thought perhaps you.
No, and I think you have to be, to be honest with the voters, you have to be honest about that topic, yeah.
Hi, question? We, the school committee had this presentation from you all before. And there was a number of students that it wasn't recommended for districts of that size and above. Do you have that number?
What wasn't recommended?
Regionalization, it wasn't recommended to consider regionalization if you had more than this number.
Yeah, no, I'm not familiar with that.
I think state was the one who gave it to us last time.
So you want to say something? There were big regions with lots of kids.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess, in other words, if your guidance for when a town gets so small, like, we're looking at enrollment, it's like, in a certain amount, that's when districts should be considering this, but not until then.
Yeah, I'm not aware of a rule of thumb along those lines, but maybe there is one, yeah.
So Desi's recommendation was two thousand.
Okay.
And your recommendation was fifteen hundred.
And who's?
State.
Okay, yeah. Well, that's, that's reasonable.
Can you explain that further? The, what is, what's the number mean?
How many students you have in your district? That, I'm sorry, that's a mixed number. How many students you have in your district that makes this worthwhile to do a number?
Okay, and how many did we have?
Two thousand.
And how, and what did Desi recommend?
Fifteen hundred.
Okay.
And that was in the information.
For the record, the school committee already passed on this right now, and they're not disqualifying it forever as we get lower, but this was not from what we're interested in right now.
Well, actually, that, I wanted to ask that question too. When you talked about disbanding the committee, if the answer's no, my, my immediately thought was what Heidi's bringing up with, which is we do know that there, it's not just us, it's happening across the country, that student enrollment is declining. So I had thought you were going to say, keep the team in case as it goes down, do we need to revisit this, or do we do another three-year, you know, study?
The statute basically tells the planning board what they have to do at the end. And it's either you pursue a regional agreement, or you give your report to the select board, it's over, okay? If you wanted to reach out to the Department of Education and ask if it could be a standing committee and just be an active person.
Just a question, yeah.
Then you could do that, but I'm not aware of that happening. But yeah, you could pursue that if you wanted to. Usually they stop when the, when they've done it, okay?
Sure. Other questions?
I have one, so going back to that initial, that initial committee, that three-person committee of select board, FinCom, and school committee rep, what is required for that committee to get formed? Is it, is it a town meeting that has to approve that committee to be formed? Or does it have to be select board and school, like, what's the combination?
My answer would be select board.
So the select board can opt to form the initial committee?
Yes.
And then that committee, how do they go about deciding who else is on the committee is, in terms of like the ex officios?
Well, usually, that's about bringing people who have the, the expertise into it. So if in your case, if you were with Town A, then you'd have your superintendent or perhaps business manager, and then the other school district would have their superintendent and business manager. And it's all an open meeting law thing, so people can attend as they wish. You can invite speakers in, you can invite experts in, all kinds of.
Do you ever see parents on those committees?
Oh, yeah, most of the time, yeah.
They have a stake in it.
So this initial committee is just checking the flavor of the community before you reach out to another community?
Well, usually you form those when you know you're gonna form a planning board.
Okay, so what's the first step?
The first step would be that the select boards in each of the two towns.
Well, no, even before that, what is Belcher, what should Belcher Town be doing?
Probably what, exactly what you're doing now, is explore the information, talk to people who've been through it, maybe talk to people who are in, who are operating the two-town region, and ask them about their experience, do whatever is gonna help you become knowledgeable about whether you want to take that step or not.
How does MARS assist towns in in the process?
Well, in, in, you mean in the initial time?
Yes, and, well, yes, and throughout the process.
So we generally have, at least, we work in pairs, so there's two of us on every project. And we basically walk people through the process. So we give them advice about how to appoint the planning committee. We are present when the planning committees vote to become a board. We go to all the meetings. And we start with basic information about advantages and disadvantages, and try to build the knowledge level of the people who are on the committee. And then we go through those steps that I mentioned earlier about education program, transportation, finance, et cetera. And each one of those things is a lengthy report. Now, it varies by community and by disposition, in terms of how much we do and how much the committee, the planning board does. So by way of example, in one project that I can think of, we did a lot of the studies, or contracted with someone else to do the studies, so that we were delivering reports and presenting reports to the planning board, okay? One of the crucial ones, for example, is finance. So we, we subcontract with another group to do the financial projections about what a new regional district would look like in terms of their budget and assessments. And then we would share it. We do the same thing with educational program, these are, these are programs now, this is what they might be. Other times, planning boards, once they build up their own level of knowledge, they want to do it. And we're providing some advice, kind of making sure they stay between the guardrails, but they like to to do the work themselves. That makes it, that sometimes speeds up. Yeah, and then all the way through until there's a vote. And if there is a vote to pursue a regional agreement, then we, that's a whole nother conversation, but we we also meet with the subcommittee that's charged with writing that. And generally what we do is, there are usually about fifteen sections in a regional school agreement. And for those who aren't aware, a regional school agreement is the equivalent to, like, you have a charter for the town. The regional agreement is the charter for the regional school district. So it's about governance and finance, how they're gonna do all kinds of things, transportation, how they're gonna add a town, how they're gonna change their agreement, it's required sections. And we'll take one or two or three at a time, give the board a model. Does, to what extent does this fit your local circumstances? And then we get input from the board, we edit that, we bring it back and show it to them, is this good? And generally, we kind of work on a tentative agreement basis. And then when we have tentative agreement on the first three sections, we go to the next three, and we go to the next three, so that we finally have tentative agreement on a draft. And then we, we facilitate actually the legal reviews with the Department of Education. We don't, we'll get involved with the legal reviews locally, the town councils if needed. But, so we go all the way through the process, yeah.
And Jay, this process that you talk, just talked about, it costs up to eighty thousand dollars.
Including the initial stuff.
Yes, so eighty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Okay, my other question is, I have the insight of working with superintendents that are regional in some that art. And I hear Jay Sullivan a lot.
Yep.
Don't regionalize for financial constraints.
Yep.
He says it all the time. I truly believe that's why we're thinking that in Belcher Town. Can you talk a little bit about that? Because this came about because we had an override in Belcher Town. We closed the building, and, you know, we're not getting as much revenue into the town. And all I keep hearing is Jay Sullivan saying, be careful, don't regionalize due to financial constraints. Because in my opinion, right now, there's no programs that we need from other districts. That's why I'm kind of hesitant. We have two thousand students, we have class sizes of twenty-two.
Okay.
Okay, so, and that's just my opinion.
Yeah.
But what about this regionalization to help financially? My understanding is if you regionalize with another town, you have to take the higher contract.
This conversation about that, but it's good to bring it up.
Yeah, no, there's higher contract, and they ask for reimbursement for regional transportation with Uber Buses. My colleagues continue to say we need more reimbursement for that regional.
Right.
And with the assessments, the towns really don't have a say on how much money is going to this regionalization, because it's based on assessments.
Yeah.
So those things there are my concerns, and I was just wondering what you thought.
So I agree with some of that, and then I would qualify some of that. Okay, so in the, in the financial projections that we've done, I think Jay Sullivan makes a lot of sense, okay? In the projections that we've done, the financial projections, they come out pretty even. There isn't a huge financial benefit to doing this. Because I think you're right, that there are some additional costs that offset the reimbursement for the buses, okay? I haven't seen an example of you're gonna save millions by doing this. I I haven't seen that, okay? The point I would qualify is that the member towns really do have been put into what the assessments are, or they should, okay? If the member towns don't think that they have input into what those assessments look like, things aren't working the way they should, yeah. Okay, I mean, I always worked with the finance committees of the three towns that I, that we were partners with. And when they said no, or they said this is a real problem for us, then it means you gotta go back and sharpen your pencil. Because as I said at the beginning of the meeting, they're your partners. Even though you're independent, they're your partners. And I have heard stories about some regions that say, okay, they walk in and they say, here's your assessment next year, thank you very much. And that's just not the way to do it.
So town meeting could vote it down?
Pardon me?
Town meeting could vote it down, townspeople could vote it down.
That's exactly what happens, yes. And I want to make one more point and then get back to your question. So if it's a two-town region, every year, both towns need to say yes to the budget, okay? If it's a three-town region, only two towns need to say yes. Yeah, so, and if it's four towns or five towns, it's two-thirds of the members need to say yes. So you can't have a town that starts to feel unhappy, they voted it down, but the other town said yes. In a two-town situation, that, that's not a factor.
It's kind of like a vocational school.
Right.
Yes.
There's eight members, you need six.
You need five or six, or whatever it is, yes.
That makes sense, thank you.
It's real simple with two members, yes.
I work in a regional school district, and I've seen the school committee disagree with FinCom and the select board to the point where they said, we get to give our number, and they cannot change it, when it does stop working together. You talk about Desi's newest, like, guidance around creating budgets and how regional school districts are different in municipalities.
I'm not, I'm not sure I understand your question, the first part of your question.
So Desi has guidance about regional school districts and who creates the budget and what goes to, what goes on the warrant, what goes to town meeting.
Yes.
In a regional school district, it's completely determined by a school committee. There's no oversight by any other group. Those numbers go to the towns individually. So that's the newest Desi guidance I was using two years ago.
Yeah, okay, well, that is a little bit at odds with the way I used to build budgets.
Yes, and it it creates a lot of odds.
Yeah.
But that was something that I've been watching happen in 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 the current place where I work. The the other issue that, so if you're not familiar with it, I guess I'll move on to the next question that I hope someone would talk about, which was, when you have kind of buildings that are falling apart, how do these towns that are coming together try to figure out which ones you repair and which ones you don't, and who has to pay for which parts of that, like, how does that big picture work?
It'd work much the same way as it would in a municipal, okay? You've got to figure out where your priority is. So to make up an example, maybe, actually, we've done this before, you do a facility study, okay? And you get a recommendation from an outside group, what's, what's the facility that really needs detention first? And let's say it's, let's say, I'll make up an example, let's say it's the middle school, okay?
Good example.
Oh, no, I shouldn't have said that, sorry, because I do read the paper. Let's say it's an elementary school. Sorry about that. Well, then you go through the same process. You know, you contact MSBA, you write your SOI, see if you can get funding.
And that costs roughly what you have those feasibility studies done?
Well, if you get into, if you're invited into the funding pipeline.
Like Core or Rapid, are you talking about?
Core.
Core, okay.
Then MSBA will front the money for the feasibility study.
These are millions of dollars.
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that's clear. These are inexpensive.
Public school construction is nuts. Yes, it really is.
We were invited.
Yeah.
Okay. But then, you know, then you're part of a very structured process to see if you can get a grant. You've been there, right?
We're out there.
Yes, unfortunately.
I'm sorry to see that.
But, yeah, so it works in a very similar fashion. The only thing would be, going back to the regional agreement, okay? That has language in it that says how the operational budget works. And how the operational budget is divided and assessed to the two towns. It also has language that says, these are the capital costs and how they're assessed and assigned to the member towns. And they don't need to work the same way.
Right.
Okay?
Essentially, what I've seen is, is the school committee not agree with how much the budget should be. And the finance committee pushed back, and these guys just said, our number goes on the warrant. And by DESI's new guidance, that stops them from working together because of the way the new regional school district guidance has been written. And it is different than municipal.
Right, I'm not familiar with that. But to this gentleman's point, if you've got an assessment that you don't agree with, talk about it and vote it down.
Yeah. I just have people who are quite. You know how you were talking about the eighty thousand dollars beginning to end? Let's say that it moves on, right, and it works out. You also said at one time you'd have to hire a superintendent with a regional.
In the transition.
In the transition. So you would have to pay your current one, hire a regional one.
So let's get, circle back to the first point you made about teacher salaries.
Yeah.
And then we'll get to that one.
Okay.
So our reading of the statute, I'm not an attorney, is that if you regionalize, none of your professional staff can make less than they do in their current situation. Okay? There are people who have a different opinion of that and say what you said about it needing to go to the higher level. That's not the way I see it.
Okay.
Okay? When we added a third town to our region, we had two different salary scales. For the new, and so one of them was for the new people.
Yeah.
And they were grandfathered. Okay? And then as new people were hired by the new entity, they went on the main. So that's the way we did that. And now I need to remind her about your second point.
How much, you had said something about you have to hire a superintendent.
Oh, yes, okay.
Director. But if you're doing that in the, kind of, as a process along, who's maintaining your current district? The current superintendent and director?
Well, in this situation, you'd be running the bus to Belchertown schools.
Yeah.
And the superintendent for town A would be doing the same thing in his previous schools.
Right, and who would be, you would hire someone to run the region.
So you'd have this?
So you're paying an extra salary at the same time.
Right, so there's a couple of options though, because it's not as bad as it sounds. Usually, I mean, you can bring in an outside person to do it.
Right.
Another superintendent. But usually what happens is one of the existing superintendents gets a stipend.
Right.
Okay?
Oh, for the regional?
For the transition.
Oh, okay.
So in my case, when we added a third town, we had a transition period. I just did it as part of my job, there was no cost. But if you're forming a new district entirely, there'd probably be a stipend. Because you've got another committee to work with.
What about, you keep your elementarys the same and you just do like a nine-toe.
Yeah, there are nine-toe or seven-toe districts.
Yeah, yeah.
You're familiar with Tantasko, and that's a seven-toe region. Yeah. So you can do it that way. And then, so sometimes secondary regions are, they just exist by themselves. And the elementarys are still independent.
Yeah, yeah.
But then there's other situations where there's a secondary region and they also have the same superintendent under a supervisory. Okay? So there's a little more alignment and communication with the sending elementary schools and how the kids get out to, so there's a number of places. Amherst does that, Tantasko does it.
So I keep staying away from money. Because for me, what I really want to know is much more about student outcomes.
Sure.
So I'm gonna phrase this just a little differently this time. How or does Mars help in conducting a gap analysis, a needs analysis of what students currently have, what they would like in both towns? I mean, is that part of the process? I mean, money aside, I'm thinking about the student experience and the kinds of classes, the kind of extracurricular, whatever. I, that they may or may not have now. And what would happen if they regionalized? Does that make sense?
Yeah, so if I understand your question, it's really something that you see as part of this exploratory.
So that would be part of that?
Well, it could be, okay. But when Steve asked that question about the explorer, what should we be doing now? Okay? I take your question to be something that fits into that period of time. There are a number of groups besides us that get into curriculum instruction programs, extracurricular. We actually don't do too much with that.
Yeah.
And to me, that's a whole ballgame, because.
We do when we're part of a regionalization study.
Oh, okay.
Okay? I thought you were talking about separate and apart from that. As you decide whether or not to pursue this, you want to assess your programs and somebody else's programs.
That's right.
Yeah, before you do anything, you could ask a number of people to do that.
There's a difference between assessing and determining that. But Mars doesn't dictate what curriculum options or instruction we provide in schools.
Oh, no.
So to Lisa's question, I think it's a fair question.
Yeah.
But I could do the same survey now and say, what do you want?
You could do that in-house.
Correct, correct. So what I'm just trying to follow Lisa's thing is, curriculum's decided and curriculum resources is decided at the school level. So let's just say we survey the regional or just Belchertown. We could get that information. They want to get us information and say, this is what you have to do with these options.
I wouldn't want them to dictate.
You know what I'm saying? So I like where you're coming from, the student outcome, but there's no data that I know of.
It would be harder for us to do it.
Right, right.
It would take more time, it'd be more expensive, it's much better you do it.
That's like saying more staff gets better score. That's not, that's not accurate.
Yeah.
You know, so I just wanted to make sure I was on the same page.
Yeah, it's more if we, if we, I don't, the money is always something we have to look at, right? I get it. And I'm gonna ask finance to step in in a minute. But for me, it's about what the student experience would be. You know, if we did something like this, would the, would the students' needs be the same? Or more met or less met? Not the right language? But, you know, would there, you know, what, like, that to me is more the point. It's making sure that we, you know, do we have the resources on our own to meet student needs? And if we were to work with another town, do they have different resources that would be complementary to ours? And then the other piece that we haven't talked at all about is regional agreements, which could be, like, take the place of maybe not regionalizing school, but adding add-ons.
I guess my question is, for me, is what does the select board finance, because I know the school committee wants out of this?
Information.
If we don't have a goal, like, I can't sit here and say, I want more programs added in Belchertown schools. Because that's not a concern for us now. Yeah, this is just an example. We have twenty-two, twenty-two kids in class sizes. Twenty eighteen or twenty at the high school, some fluctuate because of that. Like, what is us as a town looking forward in doing this? Because Mars isn't going to tell us now, they're gonna tell us the pros and cons.
Well, so I'll answer personally, because I was, it really is about student outcomes. And being able to deliver a robust program of both curricula as well as extracurricular activities and deliver the best student experience for students in the schools. And I see that more with what the parents want and what the kids want. You know, so that's, that's it. And if it is that it doesn't do anything, great. And if it does do anything, is it worth regionalizing? Or do we instead develop regional agreements? That's all. Yes.
So we're getting regional this year, we had this conversation, who was that?
Brian.
Wow.
Go ahead.
I think he's, yeah, he's answering, yeah.
So we talked about on June seventeen, so I'm sorry if you're hearing again. But I think we do need to watch enrollment numbers. And we know nationwide, people stopped having kids because it's too expensive. There'll probably be a point where it doesn't make sense to keep all the schools you have open and to keep what we have. There's gonna be a tipping point that everyone needs to agree on. But in a regional school, it's very hard to get two cultures of kids from different towns with very different backgrounds, to me as well. So that's one big consideration. And the issue which you do that, you want to be very strategic about that. You try not to do it in ninth grade, it's harder. Because by then, cliques have formed. The other things though are, when you're selecting a town that you might consider regionalizing with, it's somewhat socioeconomic, because you don't want to be so different that we don't mesh well. But additionally, like, what are their MCAS scores like? What are their SAT scores like? Because we don't want to make a decision that drives us one way or the other. Who you choose to, to kind of regionalize with is gonna have the biggest impact on what those scores do and the reputation that your high school or your district has. And those scores are probably available for the towns that I think people have in mind. And, yeah, I would look them up.
Could I ask just one quick question? Do the Mars study show information you were talking about or no? And the other part is, have you come across situations where you have regionalization where one town has, or both, has experienced decreases in student population, which obviously drives the cost, especially if it's unbalanced? So in other words, if city A or town A also needs one hundred students, okay? Does the cost of that affect, say, town Belchertown with A?
So.
So it's kind of a two-part question.
Yeah, so enrollment, tell me if I'm answering your question or not. Enrollment is a very big factor in this.
Okay.
And, I mean, just to give you some rough numbers, the project that we're working on in Franklin County, one district is six hundred kids and the other district is nine hundred kids. That's a long way from where you are. Okay? And their numbers are not getting better. So, you know, they see similar kinds of issues with really small schools. I guess I would agree with you about the more that the member towns have in common as communities, the better. Okay? It gets harder when that's not the case. It should be a natural partnership if, if anybody. So I agree with you about that. So I've sort of lost track of your other points.
Well, the point was, you know, you were talking about all the different stuff that, MCAS scores, et cetera, et cetera. Would that be shown in the Mars report, in the benefits, did the population, et cetera?
Yeah.
So I guess my question is, you know, the concerns that are being issued here, would that end up in the Mars report so that, you know, you don't have that question of, are the MCAS scores better versus?
That's public information.
Right, but I'm saying that if you're looking at regionalization, how would that influence, how would that be influenced, if you know what I mean? So I'm trying to figure out, what is this, what is this report really gonna tell us per se? Because it looks like it says it'll make recommendations, but not necessarily tell you to do anything specific. So I do understand that, it's gonna be pros and cons, and then it's up to us to figure out what's what.
And then it's up to the board to decide whether to go forward or not.
Right.
The stuff you're talking about in terms of academic achievement and that sort of thing would be part of the educational study that the regional planning board is required to do. So it's in there.
And my other, my other question was just, if you saw a decrease in population, and you talked about Franklin County and what's going on up there.
Yeah.
How does that affect the regionalization overall, more or less?
Well, it's seen as an advantage for the reasons I mentioned earlier. Okay? So, I mean, if you can imagine this, one of these districts, next year, is gonna graduate seventeen kids from their high school. Okay? So there's an obvious point there about programming.
Yeah.
And program studies and the educational breadth and depth that's offered to those kids. Okay? So, and enrollment's a big deal in the projects that go forward.
So finances not really had an opportunity to weigh in?
All right, so I think we all read what the superintendent sent out, as well as some other documents, which we did our own research. And in that process, I do absolutely agree that the, although that data was dated, from two thousand nine, two thousand ten, there's some newer stuff, but it's nowhere near as in-depth as that. The finances, the cost per student are on, between regional and municipal districts.
I'm sorry, they're what?
On par with each other. There's not a, you're not gonna save a ton of money per student cost. But if you read through the documents, the intangibles are what get your attention. If you strategically choose a community that's in a like need or in a like situation, not necessarily a need, it may cost, it may significantly reduce your future expenditures with new buildings, with all kinds of stuff. Just last year at the tri board meeting, the school department, out of frustration, just said, no, we're cutting programs. One of the big things about regionalization is keeping programs in place. As your enrollment gets smaller, chapter seventy-eight does not increase, your costs increase. And I, it's, I think exploring the options are, are kind of important.
Frustration, we said, we're kind of, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it was before the, the.
I mean, it was a, that's what has to happen.
Yeah.
It might as well have, yes.
Well, exactly, that's the whole point. And if you read the documents, one of the big reasons to go forward with regionalization is to keep programs in place that otherwise would not be in place.
Keep funding is the question.
Oh, well, that's absolutely part of the case. But as, so I asked the town court for census data today. And it's really concerning. On the papers that I gave out, on the top, you see numbers. Those are birth certificates issued by the court. Bottom are residents in town responding on census. Significantly different. They're not adding their children onto the census until they get school age. Significantly different, they're not adding the children onto the census until they get school age. So I, I mean, that, that should be a concern to everybody, to be able to make these decisions. But the average from two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-five, if you take the, if we go to seventy-six for the year of this year, it's about a hundred and seven students per grade. And if we, if, if that continues on par and doesn't go down, doesn't go up, that'd be in, in very near future, thirteen hundred students in our district. And to your point, that, it's, I mean, that's, to me, that's the, the big thing moving forward. We have a ton of buildings with a, a, a lot of cost and, and we really need to do some strategic planning now, whatever it is, regional, we don't want to do regional, that's fine, but whatever the, the community does, we, we really need to sit down and do some strategic planning and not wait until we need it. We need to do it, we need to be out of the curve.
Sounds like we have to be proactive, this is like a three to seven year process, you gotta be proactive somewhere.
We all have to agree on the numbers.
That's what I was gonna say, is I think like we did internal enrollment.
Start again, cause.
I, I agree, I think the, the data that we choose to, we all have to say, this is something we trust. We did as a school committee, we tried to do a very cost-effective analysis for enrollment, but if, if those numbers were something that people wanted to check and there was funding somewhere else to have an outside organization look at it more in depth and verify that it was accurate, I don't think more light shined on this problem, I think it's really a problem of do we have money to get people to do these really costly reports? And do we have support to do costly reports? That's, that's been the only hangup, I think, for.
Well, is it, I, what I heard, and thank you for bringing that, cause if I misheard, I wanna know. You were, I thought you had said that money for this does not come through the operating budget, but it comes through grants.
Most of the time, that's best case, yes.
Well, okay, in worst case, what have you seen?
I can't, I would, the best answer I can give you is that in the vast majority of projects that the Mars group does, they're funded by grants, okay?
Okay.
And the climate for grants, as we all know, changes, okay? It was much better five years ago than it is now, but most of the time it's grant money.
So how does Maura Healy's vision, she's certainly said a lot about regionalization, fit into the funding equation? Does she influence in a positive way? Is it nothing either way, or?
I, I don't mean to be a wise guy, I think you have to ask the governor, I don't, I don't, I can't answer that question.
Does Mars help with the grant process, or is that just up to town?
Get a grant, no, usually the client is the one who gets the grant.
Yeah, but you help us in terms of how we write it.
Well, we, because of procurement law, we have to be careful about that, okay? So the, the process is that you put your funding together, you put your request proposals together, and then we respond to that.
I see.
We can't be on the, we can't be on the inside of.
That's right.
So that eighty thousand dollars, that could be shared though between two communities?
Yes.
So we could be forty and forty, or that's whatever split we decide.
Yeah.
So it doesn't cost the town all eighty thousand dollars?
Right, they're also, sometimes, I'm trying to think of how this works. Up in Franklin County, I believe that the planning board, once it was formed, I think they applied for a grant. And then one of the existing school districts was in fiscal age, okay? So it can be shared, or one group, or one town can pursue, you know, the grant.
So earlier you said that the regionalization and efficiency funding mechanism through the state wasn't funded in the FY twenty-six.
I, I heard in a preview, in a meeting earlier this week, last week, that FY twenty-six regionalization grants were not.
Okay, are there other?
You should, you should check that, that's not my.
Are there other mechanisms, or is that the primary funding mechanism?
The two sources of funds that I've heard about in our project are grants that are issued by the Department of Revenue or through the Department of Education that are regionalization efficiency grants. And it may be now that DOR manages both of those.
Okay.
Oh, I'm just looking at their website, and it was not funded this year, twenty-six, but it's available for a number of different things, besides the regionalization, just up there.
So what would be the next step? If we got, we have to find a town, right, that would be our next step, or whatever, just as a community, we find a town and then we would start this.
Yeah, so I'm just basing my answer on the conversation I've heard this evening. You know, it almost sounds like, are there, are there some low-cost information gathering steps that you could take to first see the level of agreement you have within this community?
I totally agree, like before we, before we talk to any other town.
And look, is there a way to do, you already have an enrollment study, do you understand that? And it, it's projected, it goes back to, okay.
Move back and forward.
Did that instead of birth rates, which is something to, you know?
It did not, yeah, okay, so the NESTC, the NESTC enrollment study's not that expensive. I'm not sure, that's just one option, I'm not recommending it, but look at your curriculum and your programs, look at your enrollment, and have conversations about the extent to which you agree that you wanna talk to another town. And if you do, what are their needs, what do they see going on? And how much, how much, to what extent is there, are there mutual concerns and the potential for mutual benefit? And if, if you don't see that, then it's, it's a time-consuming, expensive process that really relies on hours and hours of volunteer time, the community members. You read, you know, I guess what I'm saying to you is you need a strong green light to go forward, not just a.
A strong green light with school?
To go forward with regionalization.
Oh, with me?
With yourselves, with yourselves, okay? That if you do a little bit more internal low-cost assessment about whether this is a question you wanna keep working at, if the answer is not so much, then the answer's not so much. You need a real, and I think, positive, almost enthusiastic sense that it's a good idea, cause it's a lot of work.
I mean, to John's point though, we're gonna be in a very, you know, and from what you said, Brian, we're gonna be in a different place in.
Potential.
Yes, in just a few years, and.
That's not a true statement, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
That's not a true statement, I think we all have to agree on the numbers we're, we're using.
You don't, you don't agree with his numbers?
No, I don't agree with that.
Oh, okay.
We have people that move in, that have kids, that have birth rates on there, we have school choice, I know that's a hot topic, cause I heard it the other night. Those are all things that have to have conversation with the school committee, and as fair, I'm gonna say it, it's not really the decision of these two boards, whether we take part in school choice or not. That's a million dollars of operational cost that we.
That's not on to us.
Every year, no, it has to do with all this. And if we're gonna not take school choice, then we have to come up with a million dollars to do that. So to Brian's point, I think he does his due diligence, we need to come to agree on what data we're gonna look at and assess, because we're all on different pages.
Okay. Brian, where did you get that, those numbers?
Town court, yeah.
For three, from the town court. But it's only one aspect of the enrollment data. Can I say the school committee's already said not yet? We haven't said not ever, you said not yet. We have to approve of this process to move forward.
Oh boy, I think that's a local thing, you've gotta work out together, I mean.
Okay. I, I didn't know the rules, you said the committee had to comprise, it's like board finance, school committee. If school committee declined.
You're not, you're not at a stage where there are rules, okay? You're at a stage where you're having exploratory conversations with various branches of town government, right?
We haven't talked internally, this is the first time I've ever heard about academic, anything for the twenty-one years I've been here from the select board.
Okay.
This is the first time I'm hearing about academic improvement or anything like that.
Yeah.
So if we're asking those questions, why aren't we having this internally to be on the same page? Because I think it's a good point, what Lisa said, but.
Which thing, I don't.
About the academic performance and stuff like that, but, you know, no one's come to us, no one's come to me as the superintendent and said, you know, this is all due to finances.
I, this mine has nothing to do with finances, and the only reason why I'm bringing it up is cause if we're gonna, if we are even considering reali, uh, regionalization, it has to be to improve this, the student education, it has to be about, you know, giving students greater access to curriculum that they might not otherwise have. To me, this is, has nothing to do with academics overall.
I appreciate that a lot.
Wait, I, I just wanna say, it doesn't have to do with academics overall, I'm not questioning anything you're doing. I'm just saying, if we were to, to discuss this, I think it would, the most important thing is how is this going to help or hurt students? That, that's all, that's why I'm bringing it up.
So I'm gonna say, this is the committee that was elected for the education of students. We're the only committee that actually serves people who can't vote for us, because they're not yet registered voters. But we all stepped in for this job to work better for students, and it feels very much like our committee already declined on this right now, and we're being railroaded into doing. That's where I'm feeling.
I don't.
I, I heard a really good point though, like what's the long-term plan, given what we know's happened?
Yeah, that's, that's.
Our buildings are falling apart, our birth rates are down.
Yeah.
We can do different things with school choice, we can consolidate buildings and shrink as our enrollment shrinks, so we can put Beltrick Town, Beltrick Town. We have a lot of choice, but we don't have a lot of coordination.
Well, there's.
And it takes a lot of people.
Yep.
That have control over the town facilities, the schools, the finances, it takes those people to, to talk and figure out what is that three and five-year plan that, I mean, I heard John Ritter talk about it when he was running for office, and it makes sense, but we don't have a how to create a five-year plan mapped out. And that's the thing that I think we need to be focusing on before we jump to, you know, regionalization or building consolidation, like let's stick smart people in a room, and let's look at all the data that they know and figure out what more they need to know to make plan.
Let me add one more though, and it's not getting any traction, since it's been the last time I bring it up. But the, the idea of having regional agreements around maybe subject areas or extracurriculars.
That's not the action. I think you misunderstood.
No, I'm saying, not, not what he said, but what I was reading more about was, you know.
There are districts who have shared AP physics teachers.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
That is a thing that.
That, that is what I'm talking about.
Need this.
Not, none of that, I'm just saying, in addition, when you're talking about the big plan, it's like.
Collaborative agreements.
Right, right.
Right.
Yeah, collaborative agreement, that's a tactical term that they use.
Okay, so that, because no one's railroading, I'm not railroading. I'm trying to figure out, if we didn't do that, on the flip side, could we do more of those kinds of agreements so that we're offering students more of maybe what they want or demand? Or would like? Excuse me?
Where's the budget for that?
I, I am just putting it out there, I have not done any work on it, you know? Honestly, I don't know how much of a budget it would take to do it. It's an agreement between two schools that you're, you're sharing, maybe a fencing club, because that's coming into my brain for whatever reason. And so you, if, if we don't have it, but the students want a fencing club, then perhaps we could, we could regionalize that. It, it's meant to come up with a third way, you know, this is not about regionalization and not regionalization. Again, my whole focus has been about student outcomes, student experience, what the students will get, well, how will they benefit? The, the money piece of it to me is secondary, mostly because it's kind of a wash. So it's, so it really has to do more work, what more can we offer? And is it a good idea?
Can I hop in, I've been very quiet. So I just wanted to say again, and I, I'm gonna be the Pollyanna, but I think we're doing such good work, working together. I've been so proud of us this year, and we have been having these strategic, strategic leadership meetings together, and I think we should keep doing them, that doesn't mean that we're looking at regionalization. But what I did hear us saying, just to be repetitive, we don't have clarity on numbers. So I think we do need to all agree on what these numbers are, even though we do know nationally, enrollment is decreasing, it's impacting us, but to have that. And then I do believe the school committee and Brian Cameron, they are the body to do anything when it comes to curriculum and anything that is going to be supporting the education. But I would love to see, maybe even our tri board meetings, for you to bring, these are our numbers, and this is what's changed, you know, knowing we had to cut a program, or now we've added a program, just for my education and awareness, I think that would be really helpful.
And for the town.
And for everybody. And then if we continue to have this information, then we can see, are there further declines? Are there changes, do we need something else? And to be able to continuously be looking at that as an option.
I agree, yes, I just wanna be aware of the time.
I just have a, a very good comment, I don't see any harm in exploratory committee. My fear is we're gonna wait too long, it's gonna end up being a knee-jerk reaction versus looking at all the facts. You guys are doing good, okay? We, we need to be able to look beyond the future. There's things that's happened in this town in the last several months that you have to agree. You have a proposition two and a half override, there's a lot of houses going up after that, there's a lot of retired people moving to Beltrick Town versus new families. So I, I'm retired, my, my, you know, I have one daughter home, the other one's on the other side of the state. My concern is that we're gonna come at this when it's too late, if it happens. If it doesn't happen, thank God, I hope it doesn't, okay? I, I, I hear what you're talking about, and, you know, maybe regen, regionalization isn't the answer. Maybe if we do some kind of coordination to, to, you know, what you were talking about before, but having an exploratory group just to explore what's going on, this should not be a threat to anybody. It's just, what's going on, what's happening elsewhere, could that affect us?
And planning for the future.
Yeah.
And, and also planning for the future, because we do know that, that the, the old, the population is getting older, then we have to have town services that are, are gonna be able to meet the needs of the older residents as well.
So.
Can I just respond to that, cause I, I do agree with you in sense. And it's for me personally, I'm only talking about myself, yeah, there may be a grant, there may not be a grant. We just had budget seasons, if we don't get the grant, where's the eighty thousand coming from? No, and we can't say, well, let's not worry about money, because we've been worrying about money in this town for a very long time.
I was gonna say.
It's a reasonable thing. Second of all, as I said, and I, I'm kinda a little annoyed by this. I've been here twenty-one years, and not one of anybody at this here has talked to me about academic outcomes and what kids are losing. So to hear it tonight, you know, is kinda surprising. We shouldn't have had these conversations before, but we were told that we have to jump on this cause there's a town ready for us, okay?
I don't think you're doing a bad job, I never said I can't.
I think we're doing a great job.
And, and you're hanging your hat on eighty thousand dollars, that's not, that, it could be eighty, it could be ninety, it could be two hundred, oh hell no. We don't know until the bid goes out and the scope of work is done. All I'm saying is, we need to prepare for the future now, not six years from now, not ten years from now. Now, you're doing a great job, you would be the person I would talk to and say, what do you think needs to be done? Okay, I don't think anybody here thinks you're doing a bad job, if you're taking offense, I'm sorry.
No, I'm not taking offense, I'm taking offense.
The whole group, I think you're doing a great job.
I hope that comes into play when the budget comes and we ask for money and we have to cut. We're putting a proposal that's the best for the students. If we can come up with eighty thousand dollars for a study, you can give it to the, the schools, and we can do.
Again, you're thinking it's coming from the operational budget, it's not, it's coming from a grant.
We don't know that we're gonna get the grant, I just said that.
I understand that, but you know what, I worked on Tadzil School, I got a two hundred thousand dollar grant for that, okay?
How many years does it take to get?
One.
Okay.
One.
Didn't they get denied one?
I have no idea.
Put it over there, put it over there.
But he did, let's, cooler heads prevail. All right, everybody, just, we're okay, we're okay. We're all good people. We're all good people.
We are good people, and we're passionate about it.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean the money's gonna be there. And I know what side you're on, because it's like that all the time, so.
Okay.
Yes.
You know, Brian, so.
Yes.
I just don't, I think it's inappropriate to be out there on each other's backs. That's my ho, ho, ho.
Can we table this right now and discuss it in the next record?
Um, well, I wanna, if anybody, does anyone have any final thoughts? I'll start with the school board.
I, I think an early exploratory group that's not focused on, um, regionalization, but all things on the table makes a ton of sense. And then kind of focusing on one lane is too early, but we have to make sure we follow, you know, open meeting law, we have to make sure that, um, we're inclusive of the people who need to be in the room to go back to those boards and say, this is what was developed.
Sorry, I just am not sure what exactly an exploratory committee means. So what I'm hearing is for, if, if we move forward with exploring regionalization, there's a formal planning, regionalization planning committee, but what, what is a step prior to that that's being proposed? Like, I'm not entirely sure what everybody is sort of proposing we do as a next step.
Maybe we table up our next discussion.
I, I don't think we're in a position to say we're ready to move forward.
Yeah, I don't think we are either.
And, and just to see what our options are, and move forward, it, it just, we, we all agree on one thing. I mean, what Jake said was absolutely one-hundred percent true.
Yes.
Things are changing, and, and, and we have a number of options, and we need to look at all of them. And, um, I, I, I think we, everything should be on the table, I mean, um, we're talking about limitations and finances right there, and, and the only way to get beyond that is to, is to think outside the box and be ahead of when we're in a problem. We, we wanna foresee it and find a way around it before we are cutting programs or, 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 or anything like that, or prematurely closing buildings, nobody wants to do that.
Select board?
Um, can I actually just ask a clarifying question? Um, so I, I know I brought this up earlier, but then I read something that is now making me, making me question it again. So this says that, so first of all, you said if we did decide to move forward to that three-person committee, that it would be the select board that could make that determination if the committee gets.
Yes.
But I'm reading something different.
I mean, I'm just being honest with you, given the conversation in the room.
I know, I just want, I just want process clarification, that's all.
It's usually the select board that says votes to say, this is a good idea, and we wait for moderator to appoint the people.
The reason I'm questioning that is because section fourteen of chapter seventy-one is saying, any town, either by majority vote of its board of selectmen and a majority vote of the school committee, or by vote in town meeting duly called, therefore may create a special unpaid committee.
Yeah, so you've got some options there, and if I misspoke, I'm sorry.
Okay.
But usually, the, the case I'm remembering, I thought we had select board approval, and then the moderator appointed, but you're reading from the, the rules.
Okay.
Anyone else on select board?
Thank you for your time.
Okay.
Thank everybody for their time.
Yeah.
Jill, did you have anything? Okay, Steve? Um, Steve, wait, hold on.
No, you're, you're fine.
Okay.
You know, I think, I, I listened to tonight's conversation carefully, and I heard the conversation set up in a table place for, for a year. And, um, you know, I think Jake brings up a good point, Eric brings up a good point, Brian, your points are well taken. We don't know what we don't know, and what does the future hold? Does it make more sense for us to circle the wagons and protect what we have, or open up a group and ask for reinforcements? That's basically a question that's on our list tonight. Bringing in reinforcements means bringing in another town, and circling the wagon means we look at what we have, and where are we going to be in the future? We have a school that could pass us a hundred and thirty, a hundred and fifty million dollars to rebuild. And regionalization might drive us in that direction. And does that make financial sense? Or should we be looking at just circling those wagons and keeping our students whole? And what does that mean? Does it mean adding on to the high school, or adding on to Swift River, and closing the hundred and thirty million dollar program, rather than trying to keep that, well, for ten years? So when I look at this, and don't take this, I have an opinion either way, I think we need to be looking at every option that's on the table, I think Jake hit the nail on the head tonight.
Oh, Brian said the same thing.
We have to, we have to be, we have to be flexible in what we are looking at, and we have to be flexible in what we decide is the best path for the town. It can't be based on, you know, one set goal at this point, we haven't set those goals yet. So how do we get there, spot this there, so that we can put this to bed? Uh, because otherwise, it's just gonna keep coming up, everybody's gonna have an idea. The regionalized, the solid.
So what do you recommend, cause I, I, I think.
I guess I hear what you're saying, I think it's time that we form a committee that we can openly talk about it, so we're not doing these tri-board meetings, you appoint two people, two people, and it's open meetings to the public, and you get some public interest to, like another committee, like a, a parent or a person that doesn't have someone in the school system to be part of these open discussions, so we can have a true conversation, it's not behind closed doors, it's transparent, and everyone can have input at open meetings.
I, I think the first step is come to an agreement on the enrollment, because that's what's gonna tell us what we need to do.
Well, you have your leadership meeting, is that something that you can take on?
Well, that's a, that, those meetings are to share ideas and inform the public. We're gonna start having conversations.
At least be.
That needs to be official.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Should that be served by a tri-board?
I think, um, at tri-board, we can discuss forming a committee. I don't know, I don't know if it'll be productive to have fifteen people in the room, plus Brian and I and Jill, um, Heather and, you know, the business manager, all of them, please.
No, but I think you're right, I think, uh, that's a good idea, Steve, that maybe we can talk about the formation of one at the, at the tri-board meeting. That make sense, yeah, yeah, Brian, yes?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, uh, so if there aren't any more pertinent questions or thoughts.
Motion to adjourn.
Well, actually, may I actually have another question? So we just talked about possible agenda item for next week, I believe it's our next tri-board meeting. Is that the only agenda item to continue this conversation? Do we have any other business?
No business, we can talk.
Isn't it next week?
I think so.
Yeah.
I have a, a meeting at, at, at this meeting last month, Nicole mentioned that it would be a good idea to come up with some.
Yes.
Uh, guidelines about how we approach each other and, and the tone we take.
Okay.
And, um, we got a little out of hand tonight, but, um, we don't want that to happen when we're doing real business.
I've actually put together something, uh, doesn't have to be this, but, uh, I can send it out. Um, well, I'll send it to Steve. And, um, it's just basically sandbox rules, so you'll be familiar with it.
So for the tri-board meeting, I'm like for, on the school side, to figure out, to discuss how we're appropriating money for this fiscal year.
I didn't hear the question, I'm so sorry.
It wasn't a question, it was what's gonna be on my agenda for the tri-board meeting.
Oh, okay.
And it's that I just wanna talk about how we're appropriating money.
How the town is appropriating money?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Anything else for?
Um, this Wednesday, the finance committee's having a regular meeting.
No, I'm talking about tri-board.
Oh, yes.
Oh, okay.
At, at our agenda, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna discuss strategic planning. And I, I think that, that might be, uh, it's something that we wanna make a, a permanent part of each tri-board meeting. And, um, just to see what every department's doing, how we're moving forward, and keep that in the back of everybody's mind, that, you know, a year or two away, things might be different, and let's not wait a year or two to, to, if we can foresee it, to react, that's all.
Anything else from the board? Okay.
I still have a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn, thank you, is there, do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
On the select board?
Aye. Do you have a second?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, more adjourners, it's forty-eight.
Motion to adjourn, yeah.
Second?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.